I'll open the meeting, what is it, 6:02 PM? This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals virtually. Your image or and voice may be recorded. I'm going to introduce the folks who appear this evening, serving on the board. If you just wave Keith, Danny, Jim, No, Pat, and our council, Amy. All right, does anyone have any comments? For those of you that have had a chance to go through the document, does anyone have any comment?
I had a question, it might be too early to ask this, and if it is, we can answer it later. But I think it would be good if we-
If we could just, for one second, we need to open up the hearing for Capes of Berlin.
All right.
Sorry.
I'm getting in vacation mode.
Sorry about that.
I'll open the hearing for the Capes of Berlin. Okay, now proceed, so.
Okay, so my question is, before we move to vote on this, can Amy restate what a no vote would mean? And what a yes vote would mean? In other words, if we don't vote in the changes, what's going to happen? And if we do, what's going to happen? Because I think that needs to be at least just said aloud, yeah.
Sure, sure, so. So if the board votes no on the substantial change, this is a substantial modification, then the developer has a couple options. They can go back to the approved plan, which is a, or the approved decision, which is the October 2018 decision, which was the result of a remand from the Housing Appeals Commission, or Housing Appeals Committee, I'm sorry. So they can go back to that. Now, it's my understanding that that's not possible, because DEP will not allow the shared septic systems. So a no vote, the other option for the developer for a no vote would be to go to the Housing Appeals Committee, where in a situation such as this, they would, in my opinion, it would be a, they would give the developer what they wanted. And so I think that the, all of the work that we did throughout this hearing to get the screening and the vegetation in those, you know, the pipe easement areas, et cetera, would, we would not, I don't think that the state would implement those. So, in my opinion, it's always better to negotiate a permit at the local level, because that is what your job is. You guys, you guys live in Berlin, and you know the town. You are intimately, you know, you know what's going on in that, on that property. You've had a butters express their concerns. And so, you know, for example, we have in this decision that there be fencing between, you know, both properties. The property, you know, Mr., you know, without using name, but Mr. Minich's property, and then, you know, the other property. You know, we have, you know, we have required fencing that will be, that will be constructed prior to any construction and site work. So that's something that the state will not require. And so, in my opinion, again, we won't know until we go there. But that is, that's, that is my opinion from my experience dealing with the Housing Appeals Committee.
Any other questions, so?
No, I just, I just wanted it stated again, because it's been so long since we knew what a no vote meant, that I just thought it would be good for everyone listening to hear it.
Anyone else have any questions? Could I just walk through a couple of things? First of all, is it Capes of Berlin or Capes at Berlin? I think it's Capes of Berlin, so where you have at Berlin, could we change it to of Berlin?
Apologies, Madam Chair, you are correct. The Homeowners Association states of.
Okay, I just, it's not a big deal, I'm sure we know what it is, but.
Yes.
If the folks would take a look at the public hearing dates, does everybody have the document in front of them, either electronically or physically? Public hearing dates are listed. If you were absent during one of these periods, we need to have you attest to the fact that you got the material and read the transcript or whatever. It starts back in August 2019, correct, Amy?
Correct.
So it would be August, October, December of 19, January, February of 20. Then you can skip March 1st. Oh, it would include March, March 11th, rather, of 2020. Then you can skip down to January 13, because those other instances, we just continued the hearing, and it wasn't important that folks be there, because it was just a continuance. Okay, let me see what my next thing was. Do we stipulate, or do we need to stipulate, how many bedrooms are in the affordables? In this document, throughout it, it talks about, there'd be nine three-bedroom, and I think three two-bedroom. But it doesn't list whether they're affordable or they're, whether, whether they're affordable or whether they're market rate.
Correct, so I did not know the, I did not know which, sorry, am I echoing? I wasn't aware of which units were going to be affordable. I do know which units are going to be the two-bedroom units. So I know that Attorney Haberty is at the meeting. He could possibly weigh in as to what, which units will be affordable. Hey, oh, can you grab me a saltzer? So he could possibly weigh in as to which units will be affordable.
Mr. Haberty, please raise your hand if you have an answer for us. Leanne, is he raising his hand?
He did raise his hand, and I think Keith promoted him.
Hey, thanks, oh, I like the other kind. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I've texted Dark Roads to get the answer to that, if you either want to promote him as well, or if you want to just hold on.
And I believe that was brought up at the last hearing, and if you give me a second, I'm looking at minutes. I think Seth Dunahoe had given us which units were.
So I think it's 1, 6, and 12. I just don't know, that's, my notes show 1, 6, and 12. I just don't know if that is confirmed.
All right, why don't we stop on that for a second, if we may? My next question was, I don't remember seeing on the plan, maybe there is on the current plan, a covered bus stop shelter?
So Madam Chair, that is on the October 2018 decision, so that is a condition. So, so, so this is very, I guess, for lack of a better term, it's a little bit convoluted, because we have a major, you know, we have a substantial modification, but the modification can only address the modification, so, he's fine, so.
Well, all I'm saying is, shouldn't the covered bus stop shelter be on the current plan?
So what we, how left it in October was that they had to provide it. So it was never, it was never on a plan. And so that condition is still in effect. The only conditions that will change have to do with the fact that they went from three septic systems to 12 septic systems.
Okay, could you just clarify for me? Maybe Leanne knows off the top of her head, or someone else does. Did we start taking testimony on November 23rd, or did we wait until the December meeting? I thought we waited until the December meeting, because the, it was lifted as of December 1st.
So, Madam Chair, that is my, that is also my recollection. So I was before this, I was before this board in May 13th, just to explain the Municipal Relief Act, and you guys continued it. And then, I was then in front of you for, there was testimony taken on 12/9, December 9.
On page four, number four, could we just take a look at the last line? Testimony was taken starting at the November 23rd.
Oh, then wait a second, then I checked, no, because I checked the minutes. So hold on. I'll have to, let me check that, Madam Chair, because I did check the minutes when I drafted the decision.
While she's doing that, the meeting minutes from February state that the affordable units are 1, 6, and 12, but it does not state the number of bedrooms.
So I did get the number of bedrooms from the applicant, and that is in the decision that we're discussing. And that is, so we have to compare those.
So I think, Amy, that's on condition five, which identifies lots 7, 8, and 9.
Yeah.
So obviously, one of those. So.
So six is an affordable in a two-bedroom, but the other two affordables are three-bedrooms.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, could we just clarify that in the document, then?
Sure, yes, yes.
On page five, number five, as required in this decision, the development will be serviced by 12 private onsite well-water, and 12 onsite shared Title V septic disposal systems.
Thank you, you're right, that shouldn't be in, shared should be deleted.
Okay.
You know, in my defense, Attorney Haberty didn't, did not pick up on that either, so.
We love you, we love you.
I also didn't pick up on the Capes of Berlin, so.
B, it's all his fault.
Thank you, Mr. Haberty. I'm wondering, is a table, okay, on page seven and eight, I'm just wondering what, we're talking about D, the minimum front yard, and it says 50 feet, and then it lists the lots, but it doesn't have anything. Is that meant that minimum front yard 50 feet is also for these other lots?
No, so any lot, any lot not listed meets the 50, meets the 50 feet.
Okay, but.
The waiver's only requested for those four lots.
Yeah, so the very, yeah, so the waivers only request, I, what I did was I, rather than listing the distances on each lot, I only listed what the waiver would be for, the lots.
But after D, there's another blank area over where minimum front yard is above it.
Oh.
Yeah, I believe that's supposed to be 5.
I believe that's supposed to be minimum side yard.
You are correct, somehow that got deleted.
Is it?
Yeah, Jim is correct, so that, that should say minimum side yard, and it did.
And that should be E, and then E should be F.
Yeah. And the side yard is 20 feet. Hmm, okay.
Okay, there was something else to. Okay, on page 11, number two, following the passage of the appeal period and dismissal of the HAC appeal, the applicant shall record this decision at the Worcester County Registry of Deeds. I know our town clerk wants a copy of the certified recording. So could we add that in there?
Sure. To make another change to that, so it should say, following the passage of the appeal period, and dismissal of the HAC appeal should be removed.
Okay.
There is no HAC.
We'll add in something to make the town clerk happy, right?
The applicant shall record this decision with, no building permits will be issued, so.
And provide a copy of the certified recording to the Berlin town clerk.
Right.
That's fine, where is this, what number?
On page 11, number two.
Okay, and then on page 12, number nine. Everyone knows how I spent my afternoon, huh? The applicant and the homeowners association shall be permanently responsible for the following at the project. I would like to see it say physically and financially responsible.
Sure.
But if you do that, I don't know how that affects H on the next page, because the building's inappropriately maintained and kept in good repair. We don't want the homeowners association to be responsible for the physical, so.
So I think we should probably delete H.
Right.
Because, because the HOA has no, has no authority over the actual structure.
And then make the homeowners association physically and financially responsible.
I got that, yep.
Okay. I was a little confused by the last sentence, I think in number 10. Prior to the start of construction, including in site work activities, I, the flow of that just.
Yeah, it should say prior to the start of construction, including site work activities, because we want to make sure that Mr. Minich's fence is up prior to anything. So, so I'll just take out and.
Excellent, okay. I think that was all I happened to notice. What I'm wondering is, is there anywhere in here that it addresses the 70% and that it can't be changed? It would have to come back to us to change that? Somewhere in around where we say.
So.
On that page 12, number nine, we were talking about the applicant and the homeowners association shall be permanently responsible for the following. Should there be something, either an additional number in there saying that the HOA fees, how they'll be dispersed?
So I have it on 16, on 16, which is, which is a cut and paste from the homeowners association documents. So, and I do reference this condition in another, because I remember I had to change the number. This is referenced in another condition.
It's page 13, item 16B.
Yep.
But it doesn't say what's included in the dollar amounts. The course borne by each owner within the homeowners association shall be in accord with the following. But it doesn't say that it's gonna, what it's gonna include.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Madam Chair. So I would add, I would add at nine, I think in that beginning preamble to nine, we would reference condition 16.
Okay, but we're gonna.
Yeah, the following shall be, the following shall be the responsible of the homeowners association in accordance with the schedule at condition 16.
Right. Could we put wording in there that says the homeowners association can't change this percentage without approval of the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, that is, yes, that is in the HOA, so we can put it in here.
Okay, how do you folks feel? Do folks think they need time to read through things, or what are we gonna do here?
I have one more question here.
Okay.
For Amy, should there be something in this document that, there's nothing in there that references the fact that they need to provide us with a HOA document at some point?
Yes. That's an excellent point. So, so yes, we will add that condition that says that they will provide us with a, they will provide us with an HOA document to be approved by town council. When they send it, when they send it to town council, I have either 30 or 60 days to approve it. So yes, that's, that's, that's a good point, so we'll make that.
Probably state that it should be in substantial conformance with homeowners association reviewed by the board during the course, the course of hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I didn't, I didn't even think about it, because we already, we already came to terms on it, so you're right. Okay, and we'll make that condition 17.
I don't know if there's a way to do this or not, but I would, I would like to see something concerning that once that HOA document is approved, that until the developer is out of the picture, in other words, once the last unit is sold, any change to that HOA document during that period would have to come back to us, to the ZBA for approval. Once they, once the developer is out of the picture and the last unit is sold, then, you know, there's only a couple of things in the HOA agreement that would have to come back to us, but.
We don't have a problem with that.
So any change while the developer is still the declarant? Oh, well, yeah, that's in condo, I guess it's the same in HOA. Okay, got it.
But doesn't the HOA basically say after there's so many of them, they take over?
Yes, and so until they take over, any change has to be approved by this board. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, how do you folks feel? Do you need more time to look over the documents, seeing that we got them today, or? What's the feeling out there? Is there anyone that knows that they missed two or more meetings? Okay, so it looks like the folks will all be. Okay, folks, it's up to you, what do you want to do, do we?
I would like to see the final version, and then assuming everything is corrected for next month's meeting, I think we're ready to vote on.
Everybody feel that way?
Yes.
Yes, especially considering I did not get the updated homeowners association.
That came out, that came out the same time, didn't that come out in the same email this afternoon?
No.
And we got that earlier.
No.
We got it earlier, too.
I did not supply the updated, because because the applicant is required to supply that as part, as part of the, as part of the conditions, which Jim actually corrected me and made sure that it is a condition, so. But what I can do is I will update the HOA with Attorney Haberty. We'll add the change that Jim wants, and then we can also, we will also provide a revised decision. And I can do this. So I guess what I would say is that before we close the hearing tonight.
Is somebody wrapping gifts or something?
Let me, I can't, yeah.
Thank you.
So, what, what we could do is, if we can close the hearing tonight, and then that allows the applicant to know that we have to file a decision within 40 days. So if we close the hearing tonight, we then can vote on your next.
But it also means we couldn't take in any further information.
You can't, so I have to, I will revise the HOA as we all discussed at the last meeting. And I can also add in all of the changes to the decision that we talked about tonight, get that over to you guys, and then we can vote at the next meeting. Now, if the applicant is willing to leave the hearing open, that absolutely would be a safety net, and so in case there's any other issues, because I will tell you that I did need additional information from Seth with regard to this, just, you know, with regard to like this decision, I couldn't, I needed stuff from Seth to.
It makes sense to keep it open.
Okay.
The reason why the board couldn't close in and make a vote.
And make a decision the same night, right.
So.
And that would, that would allow, if we need any further information or any changes or anything like that, we could make them, we could still ask you questions if we needed to.
Or I can turn my camera off and not say anything.
You wouldn't want to do that.
So.
Does everybody feel this, how does the board feel?
So, Madam Chair, the November, November 23rd meeting was no, there was no testimony.
Right.
Okay, so it starts on December 9th. And I will add that to the decision, so it's clear.
Yeah, well, December 9th doesn't appeal, appear in your list.
Wait a second, what am I?
We're looking at the findings of notice, the first page. And it goes from November 23rd to January 13th.
I know why, hold on, wait one second, because I had a, I had a question about that, because, because the website indicates, let me, let me just check, the website indicates that the meeting was canceled, and yet I have notes on the meeting.
All right, that's something else we can check into, right?
Yeah.
And everybody understands that you need to take a look at, and I may ask if I may, Leanne? I know you love me, right? I'd just like you to check the first 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, under public hearing dates, those first five, just see who was present at those meetings. And then, and, and, well, the first six, actually, including March 11. And then.
2020, 12/9/2020, I have Lynn, Dennis, Pat, Ginny, Keith, Susanna, and Jim. So I have everyone on the 9th of December.
Okay, but we'll just add it in as a date that we met, right?
We will, yeah, I just wanted to check on that.
So if I could trouble you, Leanne, to just take a look at those first six.
If I can potentially save Leanne some work, and I will defer to Amy on this, but because the public hearing was re-noticed, and then.
It was re-noticed in March, you're right.
Then I don't think it matters if more than one member.
No, she's, he's right.
Any hearings.
Okay, so we can ignore the 2019. Okay, so we can ignore the two thousand nineteen through February fifth, twenty twenty, right?
Correct.
I, I didn't know. That's what, one of the questions I asked you, Amy, because we did do part of it, part of the decision.
Yeah.
In the, in the, and then reopened it, but is reopening starting all over again?
We did, we reopened it and, and, yeah, so we're fine, we're fine. Um.
All right, so folks, uh, we just have to check April eighth. No, we don't. We just have to check January, February and March, is that it?
So I, and I have those, um, Madam Chair, so in, um, January thirteenth, um, I do not have Ginny. Um, and, um, February tenth, um, I have everyone. So it's, it's just Ginny on, um, on January thirteenth is, um, the only, um, that would be the only certificate that we would need to be filed with the town clerk.
Oh, Ginny's not with us tonight either.
She wouldn't be eligible to.
So she's not eligible. And I, I was gonna say that, um, I think she might have been, it might have been a situation where she was in and out and had, um, trouble connecting. But, um, in any event, um, we do, we still have six, so we are fine to go.
Be prepared, Sue.
Okay.
All right, so, um, no one needs to file paperwork then for.
Ginny can't.
All right. I would.
I would consider tonight testimony because we went over a draft, so.
Yes, yes. Um, I would consider a motion to continue the hearing, um, until our April meeting.
Which is?
Which is the second.
April fourteen.
The fourteen.
I will move to continue this hearing until April fourteenth at six P M.
Made by Jim, it was seconded by whom, please?
Danny.
By Danny. I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an I. Keith?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Kat?
Hi.
Sue?
Hi.
Paul, do you want to vote?
But, but Madam Chair, I do want to thank the board, and I also want to thank Attorney Quessell, uh, for drafting a very detailed and thorough decision. I think she did an excellent job.
That's why we love her.
He's really not that happy about it, but anyway.
Madam Chair. Audience have their hand raised? Do you want to address that, or we're just moving forward?
Yes, but, but if someone has the hand raised, let's hear them.
Uh, well, Mark dropped his hand, so I'm gonna allow Mr. Minnick to talk.
Yes, hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have, uh, two questions. Um, the decision and the new HOA documents, is that something that if it, are you gonna post it so, so I could read it, whatever they are?
Um, we could, i- if, I mean, it, it, we, we have discussed both of them in, at length, so.
After Amy makes her, uh, changes, I think it would be reasonable to share it with you, um, if no one has an objection.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. And, uh, one other, uh, question I have is, once all of this is approved, assuming at some point, whatever, it's approved, who, um, kind of manages that everything is being done the way the agreements were, uh, agreed to, so to speak, in other words, the final decisions, who, who monitors what's going on at the site?
Building inspector.
Yeah, the enforcement is with, is with the building inspector.
All right, and then, and then I also heard tonight that you did put in that the fencing would be put up before any of the construction starts.
This is correct.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is, is that it, Keith?
Uh, yep, that's it.
Okay, we can go on to, do we have anybody waiting for us from the conservation commission?
Louise Janda is in attendance, but my understanding is that, uh, John Amy is gonna be on at seven o'clock for the.
Okay, well, how about if, how about if we do housekeeping between now and then?
I'm gonna sign off, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
And thank you, and thank Amy.
Thank you, I'll see you guys next month. Thank you.
I have one question to Leanne, can I get what we've got today, a hard copy?
Uh, yeah, I can print it in the office tomorrow and, and then leave it in the lobby for anybody who wants it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Danny, why don't you wait until she does the updates?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
You know, as, as long as you can get them, if we don't have the updates a week before the next meeting, then you should take the old ones, okay? But I think if we get them a week before the meeting, that it would be wise not to make two copies.
Wonderful.
Anybody else need hard copies?
Pat, do you want a hard copy? Usually Pat and Ginny like one as well. And what about you, Lynn?
Um, I can do it, cuz everything works down here.
Oh, good.
I know Keith was teasing me about my computer and at home. This is the same computer I use at home when I can't, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it, it is the internet access, there's nothing wrong with this computer. Maybe a little something wrong with the operator, but you know. Oh, okay, do we have any minutes to approve, or?
We do have minutes of February tenth with one minor, um, correction that Ginny pointed out. Um, for one fifty-seven Lyman Street, um, I had typed windowed instead of widowed. So, um, that was the only correction.
Would someone care to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from February tenth as written.
With one correction.
With one correction.
Seconded with the correction.
Okay, so that was Danny made the motion and Jim, uh, seconded it. Um, I'll go do a roll call, I'm an I, Keith?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Sue?
Hi.
It's unanimous vote. Do we have anything else?
I do not have.
Um, did you folks get the, um, citizen plan and training collaborative stuff that I uh, picked up at, um, a virtual meeting?
Yes.
That, that was an interesting program, I, I I think it was like twenty dollars, so it's very cheap to go to those, um, sessions. I'd suggest if you can avail yourself and you look out there at, um, what is it, M A S S C P T C dot org, and see what the upcoming programs are. Um, we don't have to worry about budget, we've done the, uh, annual report. Who knows when there's gonna be an annual meeting? Have we heard anything, Leanne?
I have not, as far as I know, it's still being planned for the first Monday in May.
And Sue and I, um, attended the last planning board meeting and spoke to the folks about, um, they're doing a limited number of, uh, updates. Would you like to adjust that, Sue, or?
Um, no.
Okay. Well, um, they are gonna, there's like five that they're gonna put in there. Um, one is to limit to, um, the home-based contracting business, so that you have to be a resident or a blood relative residing at the property.
And owner.
And owner, yes. Um, I'm trying to think what the others asked, Sue, what are they?
There was the, the driveway.
Yes.
There was the citizens petition for a drive-through.
Oh, yes, down for, um, uh, the rotary down near Sanny's, um, property.
Village, and the other one.
Right. He wants, he wanted drive-throughs for banks or, um, restaurants. What he doesn't understand is they can do drive-throughs for those right now. There's nothing in the bylaw that prohibits a drive-through for a bank, for a restaurant, um, I'm trying to think. A pharmacy. What is prohibited is a fast food restaurant. And by definition, I think fast food, cuz, um, Tim corrected me. Um, fast food is listed as a limited menu, uh, served in disposable containers, I think is how they put it. Wasn't that it, Sue?
I, I think so. I don't know the exact.
So I don't think this is gonna, I mean, this is something that, um, Sanny put in himself and got, uh, signatures from townspeople probably at the dump on a Saturday. Um, I don't know that it's, that, you know, it's gonna accomplish, even if it passes, what he wants it to.
I can't hear, there's like sawing going on.
That's, Lynn, you're doing something with your hands that's making noise there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just stroking the back of my computer, I'm so pleased, but working well. Um, I'm trying to think what else there was. I should look on the computer, but it's in.
But what about the, um, the, was it the weight for vehicle weight?
Yes, gross vehicular weight. They're going to, um, put it in as defined by the registry. I know, Jim, you had an issue with that, but you know, it's gonna be so much better to have something in there.
Oh, I don't know, as long as they come up with something that's solid that.
Oh, I think you had a valid point, you know, when you were saying that, you know, they can put in whatever they want to. But at least it's some way of defining it. And the common driveway, um, if anyone wants to change, um, the composition, uh, direction, length, width, pitch, anything to do other than, um, normal maintenance. Um, they have to go back to the planning board, and the planning board has to determine if it's a substantial change. So hopefully that might prevent a couple of people from killing each other.
Um, I'd still like to know if the planning board's gonna, going to, um, monitor that.
Then, they won't. What will happen is, you know, neighbor A is gonna call the planning board and say neighbor B just did X, Y, Z.
Well, the problem is the planning board, when they approve those common driveways, they don't put anything in writing.
Right.
So, you know, what, what was the original driveway that was there, you know, when they, when somebody files a complaint? You know, how do they have a hearing and decide what it was originally, if they don't have anything in writing to begin with?
Well, I think they have to also put like a map. And I think there are, there are notations on those maps, but to be honest with you, I don't know that, Jim. Um, Chris Keith has, um, board of selectmen's decided to have liaisons. So Chris Keith is gonna be our liaison, and I think, Chris, you're on tonight, aren't you?
She is.
Uh, so, um, one of the other things is I'd like, I know that Louise Jander is on, and she's a, um, liaison, uh, from the conservation, and I'd like to get one from the planning board. Um, I think I'm gonna try to corner Tim Wheeler and see if he'll agree to do that. I don't know about the board of health, they seem somewhat reluctant. Does someone have a relationship with anyone on the board of health? A good relationship. Okay, I think the whole idea of the liaisons is great, because you know, most of these, like us, we meet once a month. And, you know, we don't know a lot of what's going on with other, um, boards. And other boards don't know some of the stuff that's going on with us. I don't want to jinx it, but we've been kind of fortunate, because, um, I expected we'd have this, you know, big, um, surge in petitions to us as things started to loosen up a bit, but so far it hasn't happened. I mean, other than, um, the quantity B that we have under, go, ongoing, I don't know, um, we don't have anything else. Isn't that wonderful?
Is, is one up on Highland Street company coming to us, or? The one, uh?
Is that the subdivision? That's the planning board.
Well, that went through years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that was, uh, fifty-five and older.
Is that what you're talking about, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was approved. There is a limitation, I don't know for sure what it is, but you have to, you know, start the project within X amount of time, or you lose the permit. So I don't know if the time has expired, or if they're gonna be tolling it because of, you know.
They got the road in. Pretty much.
So what's every?
They were given, um, foundation-only permits, so they are gonna be getting started.
That's interesting. You could get a foundation-only permit and make a swimming pool, right?
No, foundations only for the couple.
I know.
Um, Chris Keith has her hand up, she might have something to add.
Welcome aboard, Chris. Did you promote her, Keith?
I did.
There she is, she's muted, though.
Hi, how are you all of you?
Chris?
Glad to see you all again.
Did you enjoy our meeting this evening?
I did. Um, I wanted to stay a little bit longer, but, um, I know, Lynn, I told you that my dog, um, was gonna have puppies, and she did.
Ah.
So we're, uh, sort of, uh, every two hours, you know, have to help or nurse them.
How many puppies?
What's that?
How many puppies?
Only two.
Oh, I like them already.
Yeah. Well, um, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, if you all need anything, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to stick around for the wetlands bylaw tonight. Um, but I just, if any one of you needs anything, you know how to reach me. Um, I'm gonna try to start coming back to all of your meetings if I can.
Lucky you.
Chris, when we get it, would you like, Leanne, to send you a copy of the documents that we're reviewing for next time?
Yeah, and I was gonna ask if, um, do you send out minutes, Leanne? If you could just send out minutes, particularly if I'm not, if I don't make a meeting?
Yeah, I, I post them, I always post them on my town government, but I can send them to you directly.
Uh, you, you know, either way, um, I just haven't checked, uh, my town government yet.
Yeah, I'll try to remember to send them out to you.
All right, that's fine, great.
Well, thank, thanks, Chris, and it's helpful. Like I say, I know, um, uh, Louise Jander is from conservation, I'm gonna try to beg Tim Wheeler from planning board to be a liaison. It just keeps the communication open, you know, you kind of. It just keeps the communication open, you know, you kind of know what's going on with us.
Right, yeah. We had a couple of um. Uh, we weren't able to um, you know, have Margaret attend every single meeting, so we decided to pick up the liaison thing again.
Could you tell us how C three is doing?
Um, I don't know any more than you, I don't think, Lynn.
Okay.
Um, I think that um Peg and Margaret may have had a phone call with Encore, but. Uh, I don't think that anything more came of it than what you and I already know. So.
If we're gonna have one, I kinda hoped it would be those people, you know, they seem pretty simple.
Well, I think there's still, there's still a chance. Um, you know, if I hear anything, I can let you all know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have any news other than spring fever?
Lynn, John, John Ane is now in attendance if you wanna get started earlier.
All right, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna sign off and um I will talk to you all later.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
This is not a hearing, so I don't see any reason why we can't start early. We've done everything else we need to do, right, Leanne?
Yes.
Well, I promoted them, but I don't know if they're at their P.
They're muted. Uh, there's John. Hi, John.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Louise, you're muted too.
We're also expecting Carol. Just text.
Carolyn just came on.
Hi, I'm here. Get my camera going.
Hi, Carolyn. Hi, Louise.
Hi there. I thought I'd listen in, so, you know, if I happen to talk to people, I'd know what to say. But no, you did a good job on that summary.
Well, John, we decided to start this early. Would you like to conduct the band? Um, I can hear you, but just barely.
Yeah, I was trying to um, let, let me see if I can, my, for some reason, my um.
Oh, you're cutting out, John. We couldn't hear you.
Is that better now?
Yeah, it's a little better now, yeah.
Okay. My um, when the launch to kick my AirPods out, so now they're reconnected. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, thank you for inviting us to your meeting. Uh, the reason I requested invitation is that uh the Conservation Commission is um, has a warrant article. Uh, for the town meeting about a wetland bylaw. Um, and, and so we're just trying to get the word out and communicate with people, sort of. Offer information, uh encourage questions and um. So hopefully we can get this passed.
Can you give us the Reader's Digest um overview of uh what this bylaw will do?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so thi- this uh bylaw essentially strengthens the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, the Wetlands Protection Act is the law of the state that sort of governs any work around um. Wetlands or the similar kind of resources when uh in the state, whenever anything's done, you know. Uh, any development, for instance, or, or things like that are done. Um, it's. Understood that there are um. Like with most political processes, there's some weaknesses in the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, and therefore about sixty percent of the communities in Massachusetts have initiated or have uh passed um. Either town or municipal bylaws that strengthen the Wetlands Protection Act to some degree or another. Um, so, you know, the, the, a significant majority of all communities in Massachusetts have a wetland bylaw of some sort. Um, the um, we tried to. So this issue has come up before the town before and um has not worked out well, so this past summer. We went back to the drawing board um literally and sort of um started from scratch. With the assistance of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Committees who has a template bylaw. So we drew it up, made some specific things, tried to make it as palatable as possible um for the majority of citizens in, in Berlin. And now we have put it on the warrant. The um. I can, after we're done, send everybody here uh if, I, I'm not sure. Maybe I could send it to Leanne and then she could forward it to everybody. Um, both the draft. Uh, bo- both uh the warrant article and a, a list of notes regarding some of the things that are, you know, sort of major points about this.
I think we have that. It's dated uh September twenty-third. Is that the most recent?
No. No, it isn't. It's similar, but it's not the same. The um, the most recent one is, is from mid-February. And the most significant change there actually has to do with um an appeals process. And this came up during one of our discussions with other people in town. Yeah, you know, that, you know. Um, alright, so getting specific about this section, which is towards the end of the bylaw. Um, one thing that's been determined by case law is that if somebody wants to appeal. Um, if a decision of the Conservation Commission that was made based on a municipal bylaw. Rather than the Wetlands Protection Act, then the appeal needs to go to Superior Court as opposed to the Department of Environmental Protection. So right now, if we make a decision and, you know, the applicant doesn't like it. Um, they appeal to DEP and then DEP makes this, makes a decision whether to uphold it or not, or, or to insist on other. They might um overrule us, but then insist on other sort of like measures, mitigation measures that are put, put in place. If you want to appeal the um, if somebody here wants to appeal our decision that's based on our bylaw. But on something that's in our bylaw, but it is not in the Wetlands Protection Act, then they can't appeal to the DEP. Um, this is based on case law over the past twenty years. So there, there, it's appealed to Superior Court. And, you know, some of the people thought, well, geez, that seems like a big burden and going to court, blah, blah, blah. So I did a little research and there, there is another option that has been um entertained in some other communities. Which is sort of an appeal process um where you basically try to.
Not an appeal process.
Uh, I, I, I'm sorry. Thank you. Not an appeal process, a.
Mediation.
Mediation process. Thanks, Carolyn. Um, so we find a neutral party, a wetland specialist who hears both sides. And then can make a decision um that, you know, um can be binding or still can be appealed. But it, it, you know, theoretically, it's a way, it's a way of um. Sort of having um the.
It's a less onerous solution.
It's a much less, thank you, Carolyn. It's a much less onerous solution. Great.
That's why you invited me.
So some of the other things is thi- this bylaw provides perfect protection for vernal pools. Um, you know, vernal pools are an important environmental feature. Um. There's a bunch of them in town. Um, a few are certified, most are just, are not. And the Wetlands Protection Act does not protect vernal pools unless they are part of a larger wetland. Um, so.
Or certified.
Or certified, thank you. Um, so if there's a vernal pool that isn't certified, that is isolated. Then somebody could just fill it in. Um, like with sand. Um, so this provides protection for vernal pools, which is, you know, an important environmental issue. And um, no one really had any major concerns about this so far. It, it, I, it wouldn't come up very much, but it is, it's an important protection. That isn't there present in, in the Wetlands Protection Act. It is often present in other towns' bylaw, wetland bylaw. Another thing this bylaw does is that it codifies the twenty-five-foot don't-touch zone. There's a twenty-five-foot no-touch policy. That was, that the Conservation Commission passed a number of years ago. But because it's a policy, not a bylaw, it actually doesn't have any teeth. Um, and this was actually clearly, it's been determined in case law in other towns. Um, that, you know, and it's also been um determined by DEP for our town a number of years ago. Where somebody appealed a decision based on our policy and won with the DEP. So, you know, this would codify the twenty-five-foot no-touch zone. Now, there are exceptions to the twenty-five no, no foot touch zone. The, the one major one is grandfathering. Um, like if you're already, you know, we're not gonna make you change what it already exists. Um, another is agriculture. Um, and the third is like, there's no other possible way of doing something. You know, like if somebody, you know, we can't use this as for land-taking and actually. Situation just recently came up where somebody had to put a driveway in and it was gonna be, would, would have. Close to the, I think it was, it was fairly close to the twenty-five-foot zone. But if it was in the twenty-five-foot zone and there was no other place to put the driveway and there was no other way of accessing the lot, then, you know, we take that into consideration. You know, and probably.
Can I just ask for someone's, um, and my ignorance will show what a twenty-five-foot no-touch zone is? I understand the hundred-foot, you know, away from wetlands, but what does the twenty-five no-touch zone mean?
Well, it means we don't, we don't, so basically we don't want the area disturbed.
Right, it's the first twenty-five feet of the hundred feet.
Right.
The twenty-five feet closest to the wetland is, so in the hundred-foot buffer zone, things can happen. As long as they're conditioned, but it pulls, it, it kind of um.
Makes sacred that twenty-five feet.
Yeah, it, it makes holy that twenty-five feet, uh that first hundred twenty-five feet for um habitat. Uh, for, you know, wildlife corridors and um that, that first hundred, that first twenty-five feet next to the wetlands. Is the most important of the hundred feet.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, both for wildlife, um, e- ecosystem, but also for protection of the wetland. Those twenty-five feet form a, function also as a filter. Um, you know, things moving across that. Um, are, you know, the pollutants are filtered um and then, and diluted before they enter wetlands. So it's, it's important for that reason as well. Um, there, other, pardon me?
Finding, the ability to.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Sorry. Scrambling, sorry.
No, no, no. I got, I got the thing right here.
Oh, okay.
So if I look down, I'm not thinking, I'm reading.
I'm with you, girl.
Um, there is something about, you know, o- ordering a wildlife habitat review. This would pertain if there was a very large. Uh, section of land that was gonna be developed, um, that we could just require this be done before, you know, things get developed. Um, it, oh, it also provides protection for intermittent streams, which is an important issue. So basically, an intermittent stream is counted as gives us that hundred-foot jurisdiction. So it doesn't mean stuff can't be done within there or even right up to. It, it's just that, you know, you can't just fill it in.
Um, what did you call that? Midstream?
Intermittent stream, so.
Inter.
Intermittent stream. So basically, streams can be divided up in, in town to two types, perennial and intermittent. So the perennial runs all the time, except for maybe in severe drought. Intermittent stop running in the, in the, like August, in the hot season, you know, but runs the rest of the year. But clearly still functions, has an important role, both for um, you know, uh, as a wetland resource. Uh, moving water from one area to another, uh flood control, um, you know, quality of the water, all the, all that kind of good stuff.
Yeah, spring habitats.
All that good stuff. So it just makes sure that we have the authority to sort of like, oh, have a, have a, a say. And what happens around, you know, on the borders of an intermittent stream that isn't already part of a larger wetlands.
So what happens to intermittent streams? They get treated like wetland or what is the change?
Yes, it gets, we, in other words, there, we get to, you can't just bulldoze over them. Without like having us review whether, what the significance is. Oh, some little things, um, a couple little things. One is just the continuity of a hearing for just cause. This, this is just, some of these are just administrative. Um, for instance, you know, if we have a hearing and everybody feels like, ah, we need to continue this. We actually formally have to ask the applicant to continue it. Um, otherwise, we need to vote that day. Um, so this just allows us to say, well, we need to continue it for just cause. It's just a weird little loophole in the Wetlands Protection Act. It doesn't matter to anybody but probably me and Carolyn. Um, another, another one is a fifty-four G. Um, thi- this is. So if there's a big project, say a solar farm, this came up during the solar farm. Whereby we need to hire, you know, a consultant needs to be hired to monitor the work there. Uh, a fifty-four G allows us to say, is that an account that's governed by the town treasurer? So the applicant puts money in the account and then from the account, the consultant's paid. Um, the, so what happens sometimes in these big projects is they, they, you know, the applicant starts paying the consultant and stops paying the consultant. The consultant's like, how do I get my money? And then we have to have this little showdown, blah, blah, blah. This way, the money's just paid upfront. Again, this is just an administrative state-of-the-art thing that no, you know, the residents of the town wouldn't know if it was there or not. Um.
Is there any dollar cap or how do you determine how much money is entitled?
Well, we need beer money. Um, so there's that.
Coffee money too.
So, well, no, just, basically, they get all the money back that isn't used up by the consultant. So the consultant would estimate, I think this will be about five thousand dollars over the course of this large project. And we say, okay, we'll deposit five thousand dollars. And if the consultant uses up four thousand dollars, the applicant, applicant gets the remainder. So um, it, it's just a, it's just, it ties up the, it guarantees that there are funds available for the consultants. And the consultant doesn't stop getting paid. That's all that is. It's an entire page of the bylaw. Um, which is another sort of point I have to make with this stuff, is a lot of this stuff is like. You have to put in all this fine print. And some of the stuff in the bylaw actually replicates things that are in the state. Wetlands Protection Act and regulations, but you have to put it in there. So another thing is fines. Um, so. Right now, and this actually surprised some of the people we talked to that are like contractors, is that right now, if somebody is in violation. Of the Protection Act and we want to, to do something, we can't use fines as a way of getting stuff done. Um, there are two active cases right now where everyone, including the property owners, agrees. That with, that there was a problem, there was a violation.
Violation.
There was a violation, it needs to be fixed. Everybody agrees on the plan that needs to be done. There's a, you know, or needs to be developed. Everybody's in agreement, but the property owner can drag their feet and in some cases has done so for, like, one is a year and a half. Now there's at least a year, about a year. They can just drag their feet because we can't coerce them to do so with the. So the fines, you just say, look, come on, you've been, it's, it's, it's time, get it done, or we'll use fines to make sure you get it done. That's the, that's the only point. We just, you need, we need some leverage there. That's all that's about.
Right.
Ideally, we would never once impose fines. It's really just a threat of fines to get people moved.
How much fines are you looking at? What's a dollar amount?
Um, up to three hundred dollars a day. So that's, that's, that's what, how it's written. So um, it could be a dollar a day, but it's up to three hundred dollars a day, which adds up.
Determined by whom? By the Conservation Commission?
Yeah. But again, it's not, the idea, the ideal situation is never to impose fines. It's simply to use this as a tool of getting people moving. Because like I said, there are two active cases right now. Nothing's being done, even though everyone's in agreement about what needs to be done.
Normally, our, our recourse would be to get DEP involved because they can put fines on people. Both of these projects DEP came out and looked at, both of these projects, they agreed that there's a problem, but said, why don't you guys take care of it?
Yeah, DEP's are kind of overwhelmed.
And understaffed, I believe there's three people that work at the Central Mass Regional Office.
That's a lot of towns.
One of the places wouldn't have a refrigerator in the backyard abutting Tim Willis property, would it?
I'm not going to confirm or deny any comments about whose properties are what. So, uh, anyway, and the last one is, oh, we can adjust filing fees. So, you know, one of, what this gives us the option to, you know, have some regulations and so filing fees, um, a lot, a lot of towns have town filing fees. These would be used to, for instance, support the act, you know, the salary of a conservation agent, which is another project, you know, someone to help with some administrative, it's a lot of these administrative duties involved with the Conservation Commission. So, um, that's it. So it's, it's a it's an eight-page document. The salient points are less than a page. The, a lot of the verbiage is by, for legal reasons, repetitive or expansive, just because it's the way lawyers do things. But, but there really are just a, just a few, what we consider actually quite important, but, you know, sort of, you know, just a few issues that we really want to.
Thank you for sharing with us. Do any of the board members have any questions? Um, John or Carolyn or Louise?
This is on the warrant for May?
Yes.
Okay. The other one you had on a few years ago or a year or two ago, this was the basis for it?
No.
No, completely different document.
These are completely different documents. We started from scratch.
Okay.
With the MACC template. So the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions is an organization that supports all the conservation commissions in the states. And, you know, they actually, basically, one of their lawyers, um, some of their lawyers got together and sort of brought up a template. So we use that as our starting point for developing this wetland by law.
Right.
And I, and they, you know, on their website, they give you guidance and explaining like, you gotta put the stuff in here because that's what lawyers do and stuff like that.
Right. The, the last one, you know, the feedback that the commission received was that it was too in, too encompassing, too onerous. Um, so instead of trying to tweak that document, we just started from scratch. We prioritize the, the core things that we really needed. Um, and that is, you know, what John just went through. That, okay, if we can't have all of this, these are the things that we will really help us do our job. So.
I have a couple of questions. You guys, you mentioned that, um, things have been appealed to the DEP in the past. How many times has the DEP sided with the petitioner and how many times?
Every time.
Every time with the petition?
Every time. Yep.
I mean, so.
Sometimes with, with, with caveats, though. Um, the most recent one, there's, there's a lot of restrictions that were put on. So it was sort of a compromise as opposed to just a straight overrule. The one before, it doesn't happen that often. So there was one two years ago, and that one was more of a straightforward override. That's right, wasn't that Carolyn, the, the, what, did Louise?
The one where the 25-foot no-touch policy was?
No, no, this is the water, the wetland crossing one.
Oh, um, the commercial project.
Yeah.
Yes.
They just, so, and that, that's really the only two I can remember since I've been on the commission.
You've been on it for three years, four years?
Uh, four or five years, something like that.
Four or five.
Yeah, I did, so it didn't come up that much.
No, it really doesn't.
So I, because, so I only have personal experience in two of them. I read about a third, uh, but, you know, I only have personal experience in two of them.
Right.
I mean, full disclosure here, I'm in full support of this. I, you know, the more salamanders we can save and the more we can restrict construction, I'm behind that 100%. And, and further disclosure, I consider the conservation crew my personal friends. Both John and Carolyn have been inebriated on my front porch on more than one occasion.
I will deny any accusations.
I won't. No, front porch, backyard, family room.
With that said, I know that, um, you know, I've spoken to a number of critics in town of the conservation and it's, it's not a small minority and folks that would feel that historically you guys have been, or not you guys, the Conservation Committee has been aggressive. You know, and maybe for just reasons. Again, I've sort of support your causes. So I'm, you know, I'm all, if you know me, I'm all for aggression as well. But I know that, um, you know, that's sort of the perception as well as some people would take it as far to say is, you know, maybe overstepped your, your boundaries and or been inconsistent. And, you know, those people are going to be terrified at the thought of you having the ability to impose $300 a day fines. And so as your friend, my question to you is, you know, what do you want to say to your critics? How are you going to address that?
Well.
Whether it's you or from a history that's, that predates you.
Right.
There's people that believe that.
Right. So three things. Um, the first is this really is a different document than the prior document. It really, it really is. Um, number two is have those people contact us. I'm more than willing to talk to, to people that would be quite skeptical. You know, this, we, we want to have conversations.
We have talked with some of those people.
Yeah.
We've had, had small, several small meetings with, um, some groups of people. That's actually how the mediation got added in is they asked for that and we were like, oh yeah, that's totally reasonable.
Actually, I suggested that, but the, um, yes, but it's, but yes, that's how I was added in. Yeah. They thought, they thought it was upsetting, but anyway. So with the, with the, with the fines thing, you know, um, again, I, I hear what you're saying. People who don't know me not, may not believe me, you know, that the, the real issue here is that, um, it, it's really just used for outliers. You know, we don't want to ever impose fines, you know, ever. And, um, there are, one of the people, one of the contractors we talked to was surprised that we couldn't already impose fines. It surprises people, you know, the whole.
And fines are only for violations. You know, it's not like we're going to go around willy-nilly on every project. If, if there's a violation and especially if you don't then work in good faith, we currently have absolutely no ability to to make somebody come into compliance.
Yeah, but see, it's almost weirder than that, you know, um, because, you know, we, the, you know, if there was something truly egregious, then the EPA would get involved and you really don't want the EPA involved.
$10,000 a day.
Yeah. So, um, but again, the, the Conservation Commission has a weird role, which is that, you know, we are actually a group of citizen volunteers that are, um, given the authority to enforce state law. It's kind of strange. The, um, and, you know, there are buffers and appeals and that's, you know, and, but it's kind of strange. And, you know, so, um, when there are egregious, outlying incidents, we just need to make sure that, you know, it just doesn't drag on indefinitely. That's, that's what that's about.
Well, good luck. I'll, I'll support you. I'll be there. I'll vote.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Could I just make a comment? Um, one of the things we run into all the time is definitions. For example, what is a vernal pool? What is a wildlife habitat, uh, review? I mean, what triggers it? What, um, those are the kinds of things like we, you know, we get into the gross vehicular weight and different people have different ideas as to what that is. But in order for it to work, you know, that even the 25-foot no-touch zone, 25 feet from exactly where? These are the kinds of things that make purgatory for us and I'm just suggesting they could make purgatory for you.
I agree.
So a lot of that is already defined in the Wetlands Protection Act. Like a vernal pool, it meets specific criteria.
So you just might want to reference that in, you know, as defined in whatever.
On page six, um, and I get out, I'll send this to Leanne. On page six, there's a paragraph that defines vernal pool and also references the Wetlands Protection Act and regulations. So we do both. The, um, you know, same, there's a whole page of definitions. And I'm trying to, the one about the, the wildlife thingy.
Well, no, it's just a comment on my part that, you know, we have run into the situation where a bylaw passes and for lack of a good definition, who's an in-law? Okay. That type of thing that later on, you know, people say, well, who knows? That's not a vernal pool or I'm not 25 feet away. At least I'm not in August. You know, I mean, just as long as you have good definitions, it'll serve you well. Have you thought of, or is it included that you graduate the fines? But you just say bluntly that you could give a fine up to $300 a day might make some people in the front row choke, okay? But if you were to say, um, something like, starting at, in other words, you're not out to get $300 a day the first, just a thought, okay?
No, it's a good thought. Um, the, the way this process is organized and, and reflects how most town bylaws do this is they actually do the fine print in the regulations that come later, you know, the bylaw comes first, regulations come second. So what the specific language says shall be punished by a fine of not more than $300 each day, period. Each day or portion thereof during which a violation continues or enough is filled or or to get you made a place so it could cut you a separate offense. So, um.
Just take a look at it. I'm just saying that there may be ways to make it more palatable because there are going to be folks that are going to choke on $300 a day.
Well, they should. I mean.
Don't fill in, don't fill in the wetlands. No, and that, that was flip, but, um, it's very frustrating watching. There's one that's been two years and it just, it just doesn't answer the phone calls, doesn't answer the door, doesn't, just, just doesn't.
But some of the problem last time too, just people that do have land in town that are looking to develop it down the road. That don't want, because I'm not going to say anything, but people will come and say, don't vote for it because it may affect you someday. That's the impression I got that people were worried that it's going to cut into their project.
Right. So we were very conscious of, um, putting in, bring, uh, putting in things that would be able to be considered land-taking. Like the last time our friend, our friend, Mr. Goddard, who was allowed to speak for far longer than he should have been, had everybody convinced they couldn't put a bird feeder next to, next to a puddle. And so there is, there is language, um, John, if you can find, so there's one line that very specifically says this kind of situation is not covered by this bylaw. So we were, we were, again, we, we heard the feedback, we understood the, the fear and the concerns that people had and we were very conscious of addressing those fears either by excluding things that they thought would be detrimental or by changing the language so that it was very clear as to what we are trying to do. So instead of saying you can't do anything around a, in 100 feet of a vernal pool, all it did was make it jurisdictional for us so that if you're doing something near a vernal pool, just come and tell us and we're gonna, just like any other notice of intent. But it just included some kinds of areas that are not included now that we want to have a say in what happens around them. So it's not as exclusionary in what you can do and it's not as inclusionary as in the kinds of land, uh, kinds of situations that are included that aren't currently. But to your point, Pat, we very much heard what the, what people were concerned about and tried to be very conscious about addressing that.
Hard to make everybody happy.
Hard to make, and you know what? You're never going to. But, you know, as one of the contractors that we have sat down, talked to was appreciative that we heard what they were saying, addressed some of their concerns and his exact words were, we know we have to give some too.
Oh, that was.
So, you know, it, it's, we've given up some of the things that we wanted. Um, and his attitude was, we know we have to as well.
That's nice.
Because the reality is, is Berlin is, as we've all witnessed, more and more under pressure from especially outside developers.
Yeah.
You know, when it was every, everybody, just people in town, it was easier to say, hey, come on, stay away from that vernal pool. And they said, oh yeah, okay. And it's just not the reality of what we're facing and found anymore.
It's true.
Well, I think you're going a great deal of the way by meeting with the likes of us so that, you know, six folks here that are out and about in the neighborhood and, um, may have an opportunity to, um, share the positive, um, aspects of, of what you're trying to promote.
Yeah, thank you.
While we have a minute, I would just like to also thank you for sharing, uh, Louise Gianda with us. I think it's very, I think it's very important that we have these liaisons. Chris Keith is going to be a liaison to the ZBA so that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing because oftentimes we don't. And because of that, bad things happen. So I think.
Unintentionally.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So I thank Louise for, you know, agreeing to serve, um, and share with you folks what's going on with us.
When do we get more? We get it's the top tip of her head. Do we ever?
There we go. Yay. Well, it's probably deliberate, you know.
Oh, no. In with, and I said, oh, I'll leave it that way. So, um.
Does anybody else have any other questions of the conservation folks that are here tonight?
No, thank you.
If I could make two comments. First of all, I don't know how much this has changed since the prior version that was sent out back in September. I read through that pretty intently.
I read through that pretty intently. Just reading that without having talked to anybody and no, I wasn't in town when the prior version was discussed and brought up. And I don't know what all happened with that, but, it seems on its face to be a pretty substantial shift in power. It does transfer, it gives you guys a lot of authority that you don't have right now. So it, it, I think a lot of people are nervous about that. The other thing I would say is that I know Carolyn, I know John, I've met you. I haven't met you, Louise, but you know, I don't, I have a good faith belief that you guys are going to be honest and try to do what you think is best. As far as things like issuing fines and things along that line. I don't have any personal, personal concerns about you folks. I am a little bit concerned about what happens when you aren't on the conservation commission anymore. Because once you put things into the bylaw, it doesn't matter who's on the conservation commission at that point. Whoever's there has that authority. So if you give the conservation commission a substantial amount of authority and you folks leave and another crew comes in, they can use that authority any way they want to, regardless of your intent in bringing the bylaw into, to life. And I don't know how you contain that. But I think that makes a lot of people nervous too.
So other than fining.
Well, let me, let me respond. Jim, thank you. One of the curious things about this process is, you know, and with using templates and following the advice of lawyers based on prior case law is that most of the stuff in the document, we already have the authority to do. We, we already have, a lot of it simply reflects the Wetlands Protection Act. So really the only things that we can do that would allow, these are the things that would allow us to do differently. So, so just pull out the administrative stuff like the consultant fee things, because no one's going to really care about that. It, it allows us to protect vernal pools that are, that are isolated, not part of a greater wetland. Cause right now, if you, you know, if there's a vernal pool on a priest's property, they, you can just fill it in. Doesn't matter. It, it turns the 25 foot no touch policy, no, no, 20, uh, no touch, bylaw. Now, weirdly enough, most applicant, you know, that are, they, they use, they use civil engineers and stuff, they already kind of respect it. And they only not respect it when they're pissed off.
In my eight years, we've had one person not respected.
Right. So, um, they, they, they draw on the map and everything.
And some towns have up to 50 feet.
Oh, or 100 feet. There, there's, there's, this is something we discussed in detail. We decided to just turn the current policy into the, essentially into the bylaw, making sure that this language around grandfathering, agricultural stuff and exceptions and everything. Cause if you read the fine print, there's lots of, you know, it's like, you know, a bolt of lightning is going to strike you on the head. I mean, if, if there's good reason to violate it, then, or to go through the 25, then we'll do it. But, um,
Who appoints you folks?
Pardon me?
The select board.
Select board.
Yes, that's what I'd tell them. If you don't like these folks, tell the select board not to.
They can remove us. So, and then Jim, you know, the, the last thing has to do with, um, the, the ability to impose fines and then, you know, maybe some extra fees, you know, the, the fees would be like, say, if, you know, somebody's writing out a check for $262, they may have to write out a check for another 50 to a hundred dollars. I mean, it, it, in the scope of a large project, it doesn't make that much difference. It's, you know, this, this would be like if you're taking undeveloped land and developing it, you know, or something like that. That's, you know, we, we would get a check. Usually the town gets a check, not we, but the town gets a check for $262. You know, the fine thing is, you're right, it's concerning. Um, I, I, I use the boilerplate language there, you know, really, I didn't pull that up from anything. I mean, and, um, it's, you know, if they're, it's truly egregious behavior, they're, they're going to have to do it eventually anyway. Because then the state does eventually get involved or the federal government. And, you know, it's something that basically most people, most developers or townspeople understand. I mean, everybody understands fines. You, you speed, you get a fine, you know? You know, you burn tires in your property, you're probably going to get a fine. The, so I, I, I don't, I, I think, you know, it, it, it's, it's, it could be a, a, a rubbing point. I don't want it to be. But it will, in many respects, you feel real hamstrung by complete inability to get fined. I just, I, I just don't know a, a better way around it.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to wrap it up or?
Well, if I could just comment, Lynn.
Sure.
I think, you know, you mentioned, for example, speeding or whatever. Most of those types of things, the fine is outlined. So if I want, if I, if I was concerned about it, I could go to the state website somewhere and it would tell me that if I'm in a 65 mile an hour zone and I'm at drive, driving at 85, my fine is going to be a hundred and $30. Whereas this bylaw, apparently now it's capped at, at $300. I didn't catch that in the original previous version, but it's kind of open ended. It's whatever the conservation commission decides it is. So there's no schedule of fines kind of sort of a thing where, you know, if you do this, it's $10 a day, or if you do this, it's a hundred dollars a day, kind of a thing. So it's, it's kind of a, if the unknown quantities that I think are mostly scare the people, you know, it's like, what is this? You know?
I, I don't want, so first, well, obviously I don't want to scare anybody, but the, 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 following prior models, because I did not try to reinvent the wheel. The way municipalities, towns deal with this is they outline that in the regulations, which then subsequently follow the adoption of a bylaw. So, you know, um, you know, so you, you pass a bylaw, then you develop the regulations and that, that's the kind of thing that could be in the spelled out clearly in the regulations. You know, one of the problems with putting too much details in the bylaw, it's, it's already too, too long. You know, it already, when most people try to read this, they, they kind of glaze over after a while. You know, another thing, I think it was, was it Tim Wheeler? That suggested, like, I, I gotta, I have a, a red pen and a green pen, to, to go through this and like, you know, to sort of highlight this exactly mirrors the Wetlands Protection, this exactly mirrors Wetland Protection Act regulations. And sort of pulling out, you know, then, you know, once I've done the mock-up, it is actually make a color thing. Part of this is, so this, all this stuff is already in state law. It's just that we have to repeat it because that's what the lawyers tell us to do. But you, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, you're right, the fines is a problem, but I just, again, it's weird that we can't do it.
Well, I mean, it's not just the fines though, it's that you're enforcing it. So the ZBA has fines for our bylaws as well, but they're enforced by the town inspector. So it kind of keeps us at arms length. You know, who's going to be, there's no third party, there's no separation from you guys and the actual fines. So I think that that makes it a little different perceptually as well, you know? And I don't know.
But how do you get around that?
Yeah, I don't know what other towns have done. I don't know. You know, I don't know. I just know. And I hear what you're saying, you know, you, you're talking in facts, you're, you're deep into this. But really your vote, your town vote is going to come down to perceptions, not the reality of things. And that's where you're going to have to sell people on. So I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's easy to say you're repeating things that are in state law or, or federal law. But you guys are the only ones that know what the, those state and federal laws are in this town. I mean,
I, I, I could get your copy of the Wetlands Protection Act. It, it's about that thick.
That's fine. That's fine. I have no real, but I mean, you know, if, if the other 3,000 people in town are completely ignorant of those laws, then this is being put to them for a vote. They don't know that they're already obligated, you know, under some other.
Right. Well, that's what John was saying. So we are going to hold some community forums. You know, we definitely have to have legally, we have to have one public hearing, but we're going to do other, you know, and in COVID times, unfortunately, it's probably going to mostly be over Zoom. We're trying to figure out how to do other things than that. And maybe the closer we get to town meeting, we can do some stuff outside or something. But we're going to, he's, you know, going through the document and saying all of these things are repeats of this document. And I, I don't, I mean,
well, and maybe that'll, maybe that'll be enough to satisfy people. Maybe, you know, if you bold faced in the document, everything that was copied from state or federal regulations and, and handed it to somebody and said, everything that's bolded, you're already obligated to do and comply with. And the stuff that isn't bolded is, is the stuff that we're adding. And maybe that would be enough for them to say, oh, okay. So maybe this isn't really that big of a deal. This is just, you know, the unbolded stuff is the Berlin stuff. Whereas, um, if they're handed the entire document right now, you, I think the default assumption is it's all Berlin stuff.
Right. That it's all new.
That's a good point. I,
So maybe that's what, maybe that's the point that needs to be stressed is, you know, that, that you're actually bringing all this stuff together in one place. And they're already, you know, required to comply with it. Now you're just putting it all in one location. And, and make it, you know, make it highly visible that this is the stuff that's coming out of state and federal regulation. And, you know, here's the stuff that we're adding.
Right.
Well, thank you for seeking our input. And, um, I think to whatever extent possible, um, I hear a lot of support for what you're doing. I think it's important for the town and I think it's important for the individuals who don't even understand it, so long as you don't consider the stream that runs off of the hill and back of my house every spring, an intermittent stream out of a wetland. Okay. Uh, I want to thank you all very much, um, three of you for coming tonight. And I think you're doing a great job promoting what you want to get passed at town meeting. And again, Louise, thank you for, um, serving with us.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much for inviting us. It was a pleasure talking to you all.
Thank you for your time and your feedback. And if anyone has any questions afterwards, feel free to get in touch with any of us. Happy to
Yep.
continue the conversation.
I have feeling Jim will have a couple of conversations.
Good. It's good.
Remove you guys as panelists so we can get back to our meeting, but good to see you.
All right. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Is there anything else we need to address? Leanne, you've been very patient tonight. You look tired.
I am tired. Long day with the baby. I don't have anything else.
Anyone else have anything?
No, we need to spend some money.
We need to spend some money?
I need a bottle of wine.
We haven't spent any of our allotment yet.
Well, that's why I'm encouraging you to do, you know, like those online classes. Take a look and see if there isn't something that interests you. There's also, I, I know Leanne sent you the, um, PowerPoints and presentations from 2018 and 19. So, you know, you could take a look in there. I know you've had it, you've had enough. You don't need another couple of hours sitting in front of the computer, huh? Okay, guys, what do you say? We call it a night? Is everybody else kind of zoomed out or is it me?
Sounds good. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah.
So the meeting's still open, guys. We have to.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close the meetings.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? I'm an a. Keith?
Aye.
Dennis? Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And Sue?
Aye.